Started and then called the meeting to order for June 22, 2020. On this call, we have all five board members represented along with our township manager and our township solicitor. So as I've started each of these recorded meetings since March, this meeting is being held virtually under the authorization of Act 15, which was signed by the governor back on April 20th of 2020. Since then, we've held all of our meetings virtually using the Zoom conference platform. We are going to continue on this platform for the foreseeable future. On June 3rd, the governor extended the emergency declaration out 90 days, which pushes it out to September 20th or so. And under that emergency declaration, we can hold these meetings virtually. As the county goes to green and as things changes over the few weeks, we may change that, but as of right now, our plan is to continue these meetings virtually. So I'm going to move on to the agenda. So board members, I have you have the meeting minutes of June 8, 2020 in your packet. Do I have any comments or corrections? On the minutes. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 8, 2020?
So moved.
Spencer made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rebecca's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Bills. We have bills totaling $20,232. And since the last meeting, have list of paid bills and payroll totaling $140,649. Do I have any questions on the bills? Any comments from the public on the bills? If you'd care to comment, just please unmute yourself and speak up now. Okay. Hearing none. I asked for a motion to pay the $20,232.71 of unpaid bills and acknowledge $140,649.94 of payroll and paid items since the last meeting. Do I have a motion? Rick made a motion, I believe. Harvey, did you second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. Harvey's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Developers' bills. In your packet was the list of developers' bills. Do we have any comments or questions on the developers?
Do we have an update on Bentley?
My update is that he is notified and he has not paid his outstanding bill as of today.
Okay. Any other comments on the developers' bills? Okay. So we're going to move into the subdivision and land development. And the first item on that agenda is the Bentley property. First thing we need to do is an extension, a subdivision extension through September 30th of 2020. Dan, stop me if I'm wrong. Do you want to handle this one first and move on to the second? Do you want to talk about both items before we do anything? How should, how do you like us to proceed?
I think you should deal with the waivers first and hear from
Okay.
The Bentleys as to what they want to do with that first and the board, then deal with the extension.
Okay. Erica, you had had to conversation with the applicant. Do you want to bring us up to speed on that?
Sure. I believe Evan Pellegrino is here representing Scott Bentley in the subdivision process. There were two outstanding items, the title report and appraisal related to the open space fee and lieu requirement for the township. There was an updated waiver letter that was provided last week from Evan Pellegrino and the Bentleys regarding the subdivision. The one change is this waiver asking for the fee and lieu for the open space requirement to be entirely waived as part of that waiver process. And so I'll leave that to Evan if you want to comment anything further regarding that.
Well, I am here. I'm Evan. I spoke with you guys, I think, two meetings ago. Scott, unfortunately, is on vacation outside of cellular communication, so he is not with us. I hope he's enjoying himself. So Scott and I were talking and because of the deed restriction from further subdivision and the vast size of lots, the smallest lot being 10 acres, you know, we were thinking, you know, inherently, there's already open space that's, you know, part of this subdivision. So we were asking for a waiver of the open space requirement, the open space fee and lieu in this case.
Do we know what that fee was?
We still don't because there's, they didn't, there wasn't an appraisal done. So we don't know what, we can't calculate the fee.
So in other words, no fee and no open space. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
But we haven't done that before. It's always been one or the other, either dedicate open space or you provide the fee. I don't think we've ever not done that in the past.
And I think it's very difficult for you to even make a response without knowing what we're talking about in terms of fee. When we discussed this, the last, the other meeting, it was understood, I thought, that there would be an appraisal done so it could do at least the calculation as to what the fee would be.
Okay. We can continue. Scott and I will continue to move forward with getting a current appraisal. Now we can have a discuss, I'd like to reopen this discussion after we submit a current appraisal.
Okay. That sounds good.
Did we, did the planning commission weigh in on this as far as the?
Yeah. I wanted to add that. I received a letter last Thursday. The planning commission has not, that could be something in addition to moving forward this appraisal to have that additional information. I did have a brief conversation with Ed Latchall concerning the fact that something financial in nature and policy to get the board to weigh in on that. So there's some information and input for the planning commission. But, you know, as far as the process and the recommendation from the planning commission, they were not, you know, of course, aware of this. So that could be, you know, another next step.
Yeah. I mean, this request came in after a pretty long period of time of, with the planning commission and certainly they should weigh in on this and some sort of recommendation be given from them. And we do need, we do need to know what, how much money we're talking about, what the amount is here. So for this matter, we're not going to be able to, you know, answer, answer those questions until, you know, further work is done. So at this point, we're going to table that portion until further meeting and further information is provided to our planning commission and to, to our solicitor and our manager and then to the board. But in the meantime, we do need to extend the application, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So do I have a motion to authorize the subdivision extension request through September 30th, 2020?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Spencer made the motion. Harvey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay.
See you at the future meeting.
All right. We'll see you then. All right. Artisan group. Last week, a staff meeting was held with the artisan group. Artisan group is proposing a development of 1530 South Hanover Street. You know it more commonly as the driving range off of Route 100 and Hoffaker Road. The artisan group met first with a, in a staff meeting with township staff and our engineer, solicitor, manager, Rick Schiller, myself, and representative from the planning commission. On Wednesday night, the applicant went before the planning commission, also on Zoom, and explained the proposed subdivision. Tonight, Ron Christie is here. Ron, are you here somewhere? We thought it might be a good idea for him to come forward, present to the whole board what they're thinking and give you some feedback on the staff meeting and the planning commission. So Ron, if you can give a brief, somewhat brief overview of what you're proposing and where you stand now and if anything's changed since the last two meetings.
Also, I believe Mike's on the phone as well.
Sorry, Mike.
But I can start, Mike, and I'll just give a high level of what we're, what our vision is for that, for that property. And then I'll hand it off to Mike as well. So we, we went into this basically with Mr. Whistler looking for a new partner. We understood that before it was a proposed 200-unit apartments and then it was 93 townhouses. Both really never went anywhere. So we, partnering with Mr. Whistler, what we're looking at this property is 60 single-family detached homes. We're shooting for a market where we feel there's a demand for, and that is the first-time buyers, people that are just starting families that do not want apartments or actually want to move out of apartments. They want a little bit of land, but not too much, and they don't want to rent. And we feel that 60 single families would work well there, and we feel there's a demand for this particular product. We're looking at these things anywhere from 18 to 2,800 square feet, maybe three bedrooms, two and a half baths, two-car garage with additional two cars in the driveway. And from, from the, from the prior meetings and some of the suggestions that were made, we are looking at into potentially moving some of the, some of the drives that we currently show coming out on Route 100 right now. We're exploring the possibility of shifting that around and having everything come out onto Hoffaker and eliminating that entrance onto Route 100. So, you know, that's what we're working on now after the last couple of meetings. We're also trying to get in front of the owners of the five-acre parcel at Hoffaker and 100 right there to see if we can acquire that asset as well and to bring the roads across that parcel and out to Hoffaker.
So how much would the house cost?
So, you know, we're looking at it somewhere, you know, in maybe the 400 range.
Do you want to tell them the square footage, too?
So we're going to have different models, different layouts, but anywhere from 1,800 square feet to about 2,800 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah. And the 400 is, we consider that a starter range when, when you look at where interest rates are today. Believe it or not, you can get into a $400,000 house less than renting a two-bedroom apartment.
Oh, just seems a little high to me, but anyway, just was wondering.
Yes. I'll add into there real quick. The plan you're looking at was, I guess, based on what artisans' understanding was after Whistler and the prior developer had come through. I had had some discussions with Kevin Hennessy, and he directed me to the gateway master plan to show kind of what, what the township was looking for with regard to road improvements along Route 100. And I guess that plan was showing traffic signal, basically where the entrance of this is lining up across the street with the Caribou Development, which was approved approximately nine years ago with three 30,000-square-foot office buildings. And also with the township's desire to connect a, I guess, a bypass or loop road that connects over to the suburbia shopping center. We're showing, I guess, our road connecting to the edge of that five-acre piece that's between us and Hoffaker Road. And then also showing the right-of-way that would be granted to allow the township at some point as they acquire additional right-of-way across the back of those other properties to extend that road across there. I guess during our previous discussions with staff and the planning commission, I guess, two concerns that came up was, one was the access to Keim Street and the, this development potentially becoming a cut-through from 100 down to Keim Street. And two, looking at the regional comprehensive plan and looking at Hoffaker Road as being a intersection of concern and that, that signalization is needed at that intersection. That's why during those meetings, it was discussed that it may be, and the fact that that Caribou Development was approved such a long time ago, and who knows if that's ever going to happen. And that development really would be the driving force for warrants of a signal at that location, that it made sense to, I guess, try to acquire that either right-of-way across that five-acre piece or the five-acre piece to incorporate into the development and to work on trying to make that signalized intersection happen at Hoffaker and Route 100. This development, we're presenting a sketch plan because to make this development happen and be able to fund those type of road improvements, an overlay ordinance is going to have to be drafted and adopted to make that happen. So we wanted to present a concept. We wanted to get, I guess, as much feedback as we can upfront and then try to work, you know, in partnership with the township to try to make this happen.
So do I have questions from the board?
How much acreage would be allotted for each home?
I believe the ordinance, we're talking about approximately 6,000 square-foot lots. Ron is going to, I guess, get some information on other developments that they have either worked on or familiar with to show how this concept would kind of lay out in more of a village-type concept so to, I guess, to alleviate any of the concerns the township may have with, with the size of the lots and how this would lay out. And I believe you're still working on that, Ron, correct?
Yes, we are.
So we will be, in the future, we will be presenting, I guess, information or elevations related to what, what these units would look like and also how they would lay out in a development such as this.
Will your information also include information as far as the impacts on the school district? How many children? That kind of stuff?
I guess it can.
Yeah. Because one of the questions we're going to get, and we got this on the developments that were proposed in the past, is what kind of impact will this have on the, on the school district? Because that's, you know, that's a big tax question. And so it, you know, that's information that's going to be asked of you guys. So I would recommend that you be ready to answer that question.
Very good.
Public comment? Do we have any comment or questions from the public? If so, please just unmute yourself and speak up now.
Hi, this is Diana McGee. I have a statement. I know this development is planned for single-family homes. You say it's a starter home at $400,000. That's a pretty steep price for a starter home. What I'm wondering is, would a developer consider, or this developer consider, a 55 and over community? Maybe the zoning would have to be changed, add some more housing, more houses, but it's not going to create a burden for the, the school district? And then we don't have to worry about how many children are going to be going to the schools?
We had this discussion with, with the board, and this developer does, actually does have over 55 projects that it's working on currently in East Vincent Township and Upper, Upper Pots Grove Township. The issue is, in today's over 55 communities, the residents are looking for significant amenities, clubhouses, pools, meeting rooms. I guess, Ron, you could jump in with other things, that a, that would require considerable more density than what's being proposed here to, I guess, cover the cost of those type amenities with it. The reason to propose in the kind of density here now is to cover the cost of the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the traffic signal would cost to put in at that intersection.
Just a question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public question or comment? Okay. All right. Hearing nothing else. Nobody has anything to add. We're going to move on. I hope that you guys have got the information and, that you need and see what happens from here.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Here, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on. Second. To the next item on the agenda is a zoning application. Erica, you want to bring us up to speed on this? We're just essentially acknowledging receipt of this, but do you have information on it?
Sure. This is an application for Keith and Karen Place, 1326 Temple Road. They are looking to have an attached garage installed. They have a, the requirement is a 40-feet setback. It's currently a pre-existing non-conforming of 25 feet, and they would like three feet as their approval for this variance. And they provided information regarding the homeowners that are adjacent to the property. They have expressed that the property owner that is on the side yard where they're looking to seek this relief is okay with the project as proposed. And this will go through the process of being scheduled through the zoning hearing board and is an acknowledgement. But if there's any additional comments or, you know, in terms of the actual ordinance and the information presented, that can be forwarded to the zoning hearing board.
Okay. Very good. No other action is required. It is just making everybody aware of it.
That's correct.
I guess while we're on the zoning, there is a zoning hearing for this Thursday, correct?
Yes, there is. And it is on Zoom. It's the application of Brad Algeo. It's Glenmar Drive, and that'll be 7 o'clock soon.
Okay. And did we get, forgive me if you said it, and I, I've been seeing a lot of Zoom emails.
I know.
Did we get the Zoom link for that yet?
Yes. The Zoom link is on the Google Calendar on the township website. So it's in the actual meeting.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. So we're going to move on to committees. Under our committee heading, we have the recommendation of Parks and Recreation Commission to adopt the 2020 and 2021 White Deer, Whitetail Deer Archery Program Rules and Regulations. So do I have any comments or questions on that? The copy was provided via email to the board. I have transformed that into a PDF. It will be posted probably tomorrow once this is approved. Any questions from the public on the deer management rules and regulations?
Are there any changes?
Yes, a few changes. The major change being reducing the number of permits that we will be issuing. This is John Hellwanger.
Reduced it from how many to how many?
39 to approximately 30. Our blue's 30. So we're removing nine permits.
Okay. What was the reason behind it?
To get more in line with what the deer population currently is and what the neighboring areas, parks, townships have been doing.
All right. Do I have a comments? Any other questions from the board? Do I have any comments or questions from the public? Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to authorize the adoption of the Whitetail Deer Archery Program Rules and Regulations for 2020 and 2021.
So moved. I'll make, second.
Harvey made the motion. Spencer seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And as I said, I'll post that on the website tomorrow. Okay. Supervisors' reports. Does anybody have anything? We'll go down the line. Rebecca, you first? Anything you'd like? Nothing?
Nope.
Rick? Anything?
There'll be an open space meeting, the Zoom, tomorrow at 7 o'clock. I don't know. It's been posted on the website, on the address. So maybe somebody could check on that.
It has. It is. Has been. I posted it earlier today.
I just checked today, and it's not on the website. It's on the Facebook and social media.
Yeah. I didn't see it either earlier when I was on the website.
I'll double-check it. It's, it's up there now, too, though.
I'm going to need an ID number.
Yes.
I have a telephone number.
Chris sent you an email. It's called, what's it called? Room ID, something to the effect of room ID or like that.
Okay. I'll contact Chris then.
Okay. It's there.
Yeah. Spencer, check, check an email that was sent out today. It has all the information, the meeting ID and all that. So email.
I have a telephone number.
And, and the telephone number I gave you before, but the meeting ID is in the email. So check with the computer you have at the house you're in now.
Okay. I'll do that. Thank you.
I'll be on like quarter of seven. So if you want to try to dial in early, I'll be there to meet you. Rick? Anything else?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. First thing is, the Potts Town Metropolitan Regional Planning Commission is holding, holding their monthly meeting this Wednesday. That's being held also virtually. So I'll be attending that online. Do you guys see that?
Yes.
We can see your screen.
So last Tuesday night, the EAC put on the first of a series of webinars that they're going to be holding this summer and into September. First one was called Water Policy in America and Historic Context. It was presented by Corey Trejo, who's a township resident. It's on Clean Water Act MS4. Really, really interesting. I posted it to the township website. It appeared on Facebook, Twitter, and it's also It's also posted here on the township YouTube channel. I really encourage certainly the board, because we have MS4 stuff coming at us. And there's a lot of good information about the history of water and why MS4 is so important. So I really encourage you to take some time to sit down and watch this. It was really well presented and certainly appreciate the work Corey did and our EAC. John, EAC did a great job putting this one together and certainly looking forward to the remaining parts of the series. But that's this, the entire series will be posted to the township website. But I encourage you to to go here and and watch this. Also, if you can, you can see all the meetings that we've had since March, all the virtual meetings are being posted here. You see how many times are viewed and that kind of thing. So it's interesting, if you want to go back and reference a past meeting, it's it's right there. So I just wanted to point that out. that's all I have. Bart, anything from you?
I only have one thing, it's Laura Wood Road. It goes into Pottstown Landing from the ice cream parlor down. You can't even tell there's a curb there, there's weeds growing between the street and the curb, and sometimes over the curb from the other side. I don't know whose responsibility that is, but somebody needs to clean it up.
Okay, I've noted that, thanks there, Harvey.
That's it. And Spencer, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just have one thing. Earlier, in one of our meetings, we tabled any work to be done at Fernbrook, which included restoration of the roadway, the lane. I'm wondering if it's too soon to bring this up again. But in light of the fact that our finances are where they should be, I didn't know if we could reinstate that part of the restoration at Fernbrook or not. Or if you just want to keep it tabled for now.
Well, I think we should start thinking about it for sure. Erica's gonna give an update on financing here, our finances here in a moment. And maybe we, maybe this is something we can put on the agenda for the next meeting and see if it's the right time to to do it and where the money's gonna come from. So it's not too early to bring it up. We should revisit this and see what makes sense and what the road crew's schedule is and how it would fit into their workload, so.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. All right. Erica, managers' report.
All right, very good, thank you. I, last week, we we got the announcement through Governor's Office that Chester County's going Green Friday, so we'll be preparing, I know from the township perspective, for parks and recreation facilities and the actual office of the township, we've been doing well, you know, given everything that's going on, but we're looking at other municipalities, how they're handling this, and answering a lot of questions from people trying to, you know, work through the different guidelines the best we can concerning this change. So I again urge everyone to look at the Chester County Health Department. There's Restore Chester County, a lot of good resources for businesses looking to transition, and then also the CDC. I know a few pools are opening and different facilities, so we're navigating that and helping people go to those resources for their questions. Laurel Wood Road Bridge Project, JPS Construction finished the abutment repairs and resurfacing of the road there, and the contractor does anticipate completing the job by mid-July, so that's good news. We took a few pictures. I put that in my report just so you can get an idea of the condition, and the contractor has been working well, given the weather. Chip seal program beginning tomorrow, we'll we'll have our contractor, this is asphalt maintenance, performing the chip seal for a period of four to five days. It's weather dependent, things are looking okay right now. The following streets are Fawn Lane, Marshall Drive, Melville Drive, Klein Avenue, Route Avenue, Pearl Street, Coin Alley, Mount Zion Avenue, Lindberg Avenue, Park Avenue, Sherford Boulevard, Tyson Avenue, Worth Boulevard, East Keller Road, Brown Street, and West Meadow Brook Lane. And we put out signs in advance, but we ask our residents to move their cars from the streets so we can get this project finished. The EAC is, Jim had reported, had their first webinar series for the summer on water policy. So thank you, Corey Trejo, he did a really fantastic job, and we're glad that we have it available on the YouTube channel and pushing that out. And the next one will be July 22nd, 7 to 8 p.m., Native Plants in the Landscape. So there's one in August and there's one in September as well. As far as the township financial outlook, we have analyzed the general fund budget performance reports for year-to-date, January 1st, 2020 to May 31st, 2020. And as a summary of performance, we are seeing the real estate taxes stabilize and earned income tax disbursements have increased. Now, real estate taxes, of course, we had a extension on the discount period, but June 30th, when we look at June, we will be seeing that revenue collected here. That is, you know, good for the township, but again, when we are assessing this, these are the first few months when we do receive, as far as municipalities and a property tax situation, that that money come in. So total revenue collected, including taxes, fees, intergovernmental revenues, is $3,073,107, which exceeds the budget amount for this period. We're still remaining vigilant on collections, of course. On the expense side, actual budget figures with total expenses of $2,088,098 are lower than budget for this period by about 6%, providing a net income to the township of $985,000 for the period ending May 31st. In comparing the 2020 to 2019 figures, the revenues are 3.5% higher than 2019. Again, we have to keep in mind, this is budget to budget. And then the 2020 general fund expenses, the overall figures remain comparable. And then staff will, of course, continuously monitor what is going on, but we are glad to see the receipts of funds coming in. We are certainly going to be watchful of unemployment rates, of the EIT, variability of anything that, you know, we're trying to anticipate for, given this very different fiscal year. And then zoning hearing, as I had discussed that earlier, that will be held this Thursday via Zoom. So lots of meetings of the township still taking place on Zoom. And that's my report. Thank you.
All right, good. Thanks, Erica. Board, any questions for Erica based on that? Okay. Dan?
Okay, I want to go over the Tripodi matter. Two things. First of all, I did correspond with the court directly, because as you know, Judge Mann back in March had required the Tripodies to post their bond. The appeal period, we did go through the Commonwealth Court, which denied the injunction. And now that the courts are open, I was inquiring as to the next step. The the court's order does not require us to do anything, so I was inquiring with respect to that. I did leave a message, in fact, with Judge Mann's chambers at the end of the week. Have not heard from them at this point. Will follow up with respect to that particular issue. There's also, it came to our attention, some tire dumping on the property. I reached out to Mr. Corey as to whether he wanted to take the leads with respect to obtaining additional monies for escrow into the escrow account. I have not heard from him either. I do, and I believe Ron is starting the process, for me, if I'm wrong. I do think you should, and my recommendation was to at least begin the notice process, begin the citation process, and and at least go from there so that when hopefully Judge Mann does enter the order requiring him to either post or go to jail, and posting is made, we can hopefully start the process of cleaning it up if necessary and securing the property.
Erica, you can make sure that Ron starts the notice process there.
Yes.
Jim, it's Ron.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, hey, Ron.
Yeah, the the notice is done and ready to go out. I didn't send it out today because there was a question as to whether we were gonna send a notice first or send citations, but from what I'm hearing from Dan, we should be sending a notice.
Yes.
Okay, that will go out tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Ron.
Dan, anything else?
The other issue we, Erica and I did talk about with the personnel issue, I do think we should discuss on executive session if possible.
Yeah. Our agenda has an executive session on it for that purpose.
Okay. I need, nothing further.
Okay. While I'm thinking of it, the St. Peters Road property, why we have Ron here. Ron, do you have, or Erica, any updates on on what's going on with the grass out there? And the cleanup of that property, 1778, I think it is?
On the last, I, my communication was that the grass in the exterior was being handled. Anything different than that?
No, I I haven't heard anything. I haven't been out there, but I can go out and check tomorrow.
Okay, yes, please do that.
Hi, excuse me. Oh, it's Sharon. Hi. Hi, the neighbors from that property. They have been mowing it every two weeks.
Okay, good.
I've been keeping up on that.
All right. So we just need to get the cars out there, right? I mean, that's what's pending at this point?
I guess. I don't, and I guess some kind of inspection of what could possibly be some violations over there?
Ron, is that right?
Jim, I didn't catch, what was the question?
What, the grass is being maintained, but the cars are are still there? And what else are we waiting to happen there?
Waiting to get into the, inside the property to see what the, you know, the object is to get in there and find out what's going on inside. If it's if it's at a point where we condemn it, then, you know, then we have a leg to stand on to get, you know, the property cleaned up, but we can't get inside.
And what's, why not? What's the holdup?
He won't give us permission. I will reach out, I will reach out to Mr. Gardner again and see if he's, you know, got anything.
Okay.
Just one quick thing. This is Sharon again. The attorney actually contacted us. Apparently, he had some real estate people come about, and I guess basically he's been told it's really not something that somebody can fix up. So they said that really the only value would be if one of the neighboring properties wanted to purchase it. So he did reach out to us, and we did call Erica at one point because his thing to us was to make an offer. And we told him we couldn't possibly do that, not knowing what's on that property, what we would need to be taken care of. I mean, we have no, our interest is not in the house at all, that would just be gone. It would just basically be the land only. But we we kind of told him that that's just not something, we don't even know if there's what the septic situation is, anything. And we had mentioned about going inside. He said no, that he hadn't, but that if we were interested in the property, that he would find them and or ask him if we would have, that he would allow us to go into the property, but he would have to write up some stipulations that the township couldn't use what they found against him.
I'm laughing because that's what he keeps telling us.
Yeah, yeah, so so we've kind of left it as, we're not really.
Your, your offer.
We're gonna let, that's not our place to be doing, so we're gonna let that, the township, let him deal with the township on that.
Your offer can be contingent on those inspections. I mean, you would have to do them, it would cost you money, but your offer be contingent on it. Something to keep in mind.
Okay.
Okay, all right, very good.
Have you talked to Mr. Gardner at all about that?
Me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes, I had had a conversation, my husband and I had a conversation with Mr. Gardner about that. And we left it, it was probably been, the last one's probably been two or three weeks ago, and just said that, you know, we don't even know if there's like an oil tank buried. There's nothing we know anything about the property that we could not even make him an educated offer.
Sure.
You know, long story short, I don't, I don't want to get into, you know, it's asbestos and the whole thing. And before we could even get anybody to give us an idea of what it would cost to get rid of it, you know, we'd have to have access to that property, and between you and I, I don't really want to walk through that property.
Yeah, well, we don't either, but we're gonna have to. I will reach out to Mr. Gardner tomorrow and find out where it stands.
And just so you know, this is Tim, but the last contact we have from Mr. Garner was, his admin had called us and said that he was going to be sending us an email. That was about a week and a half ago, and she said you should have in a day or two. We haven't received anything else from him, so we, you know, we're not sure where it stands.
All right, I'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Portion of the meeting where the public can speak up. If you do, if you want to, please just unmute yourself and please identify yourself and ask your, and make your comment.
Hi, Jim, it's John Worth.
Hey, John.
AC. Thanks for your words and Erica's words and and your continuing support of the EAC in our webinar series. I just wanted to echo that I think, you know, Corey did a terrific job and excellent presentation, a great way to kick off the whole series. And I think the the next one in the series is going to be of great interest to to residents. It's not just an instructional one, but more of a practical one about using native plants and and how they can use native plants to decorate and and enhance the beauty of their own property. So looking forward to that, that happens on July 22nd. I would encourage everyone to obviously look at the recording of Corey's and tune into the next one on July 22nd. I also want to make a comment and thank John McKee for, I was up at Hanover Meadows the other day and looking around, and it really looks great. I mean, there's a lot of areas that that John is, you know, not mowing very frequently, and we have a lot of what looks like just native meadow returning to the area around Hanover Meadows, and it's beautiful. So thanks, thanks to John, they're doing a great job maintaining that property.
Thank you, John. Just one note. We had our bond meeting a few weeks ago, and I know the flower beds are, you know, are pretty wretched looking, and so I just sort of public knows the landscape contractor is coming in the end of the month, beginning of July, to maintain the weeds there and then also touch up the mulch. So it's not neglect on our part. Just, it was part of his contract, he owned that, so we were trying to get that resolved as part of the contract with the building.
And where are the flower beds, John? I didn't notice that.
All around the building, the parking lots.
Close to the building, gotcha. Okay, okay. Well, you and I, I do want to get together with you and talk about where we could put in, you know, a native pollinator or butterfly garden, like for a demonstration for the public, so. EAC would do all the work, and and we just want to make sure it's in a place that, you know, you you would would work for your, you know, for the plan for the site. So I'll be in touch.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other public comment?
Jim, I wonder if the officer in charge, Dykert, if he has any report?
Hello? Anything in particular they're looking for, or just kind of in general with the situations going on around town and the nation?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, sure. Yeah, there's certainly been a lot going on in the news, and everyone has been aware of that and have seen videos coming in and coming out daily and decisions that are being made. I can say that at this point in time, I'm only, I'm only aware of one email that came across my desk where a resident was concerned about, you know, the the use of, the use of force in in different situations, especially dealing with chokes and neck restraints, things like that. And the one thing I would would recommend, or would just just let everybody know is that those those items, as long as I've been an officer in North Coventry and a couple of years before, I'm sure have been, those those types of holds are only used as a very last resort for officer safety in that situation. We do not go out and and grab hold of people's necks and use choke holds. We do not go out and, and grab hold of people's necks and use chokeholds routinely. That, that, like I said, that is, that is a, that's only used in those last, last resort efforts when it comes to the officer surviving an attack. So, so the things that you, we do see on the TV, a lot of those are issues that are, that are out there in police work. Our, our department does not use those types of holds. And, and, and we, and we, with the accreditation process that we go through, we do have these best practices that we follow and are used throughout, the Chiefs of Police Association and Accreditation Board has, has developed. So, so I think we're ahead of the curve on those things and we, we stand pretty good as far as the, the policies that we follow. So, so I think we're, we're good that way. We are, though, getting involved with the area police departments here in the Pottstown area to, just to go over some de-escalation practices. Just a, just a refresher, a lot of officers have already gone through those types of things. And of course, now with, like you said, with everything that's going on, it's certainly a good time to refresh just, you know, how we can de-escalate a situation and hopefully walk away peacefully rather than getting into any type of physical altercation. The, the Chester County DA's office has reached out to police departments in Chester County asking for policies so they can look over the policies in the different police departments, just to see where they are, to see what, where the police department stand. And that's, that just began last week, so that's really in the, the, the beginning stages. But the District Attorney, Deb Ryan, has, has kind of spearheaded that and has an interest in getting the community involved, just to make everybody aware of where the police departments in Chester County stand and the policies that are in effect in this area. So we have a lot going on. Like I said, I, you know, I think with the way our department has been running, it's been the, you know, we are, we are ahead of the curve in, in a lot of situations. And, you know, I think our policies are, are good ones and, and ones that, you know, is, is what the community is looking for.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's, if there's no further public comment, we are going to recess this meeting. We aren't going to have an executive session, so at this time, I'm going to ask those of you who joined us here tonight to sign off. I thank you very much for, for joining us here. And hopefully we'll be back in a room at some point and be able to talk and in person. But we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Okay, so I restarted the recording. The board just came out of an executive session. No decisions were made based on that executive decision that required a motion. So at this time, we are going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, good night.
Good night, everyone.